Morning.
Welcome to regular meeting of the City Council and the Needles Public Utility Authority for the City of Needles, California, Tuesday, October 28th. Council Executive Session will begin at 5:45. The Mayor and the Council members may be attending the meeting via Microsoft Teams. Ball to order roll call.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longacre.
Public comments pertaining to Executive Session items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Do we have any public comments? See none recessed to Executive Session.
One moment please, Your Honor.
Yes.
We lost Councilmember Longacre. He will call back, right?
Do you, I'll text him.
Okay, just have him call into the closed session.
Okay.
That's probably what he.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's possible, you're right.
Actually, yeah.
Dale?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Uh, Executive Session, A Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.92 and/or 3, One Potential Case, and B, Conference with Labor Negotiator Pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6, Personnel, Agency Representative, City Manager Rick Daniels, Employee Organizations, Teamsters Local 1932.
Good evening. Executive Session Report by City Attorney.
Yes, the Council met in closed session. Item A was Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.92 and/or 31, Potential Case. And Councilmember Longacre recused himself from that item and did not attend that closed session item due to the fact that he works in the cannabis industry and this potential litigation could involve the cannabis industry. There was no reportable action taken in closed session on that item. Item B, Conference with Labor Negotiator Pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6, Personnel, Agency Representative, City Manager Rick Daniels, Employee Organizations, Teamsters Local 1932, there was no reportable action taken on that closed session item. And that concludes the report out in closed session.
Thank you. Ball to order roll call.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
Please join and stand in me while we give the invocation and while Councilmember Chris Merritt leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father in Heaven bless this town and its citizens. Guide our council and city staff in their judgments and deliberations. And bless those who travel these desert highways to come to our crown jewel in the desert. In God's name we pray, amen.
Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Now, we have two, we have two members, uh, absent tonight. We need excused absence for Mayor Jeff Williams and for, uh, Councilmember Ellen Campbell.
Um, for an excused absence for Councilmember Campbell and Mayor Williams.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Provo agenda is our motion.
I move to approve.
I second.
I heard, uh, Councilmember Longacre.
Yes, we have motion by Councilmember Merritt and a second by, uh, Councilmember Longacre, call for the vote.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yeah.
Conflict of interest, do we have any?
I, Your Honor, I have multiple.
Yes, go ahead, please, Councilmember Longacre.
Um, I already recused myself on Executive Session, Item A, and then I have, uh, Agenda Item One and Agenda Item Two, um, due to the fact that I work in the cannabis industry and they are cannabis-related items. Um, John, when they start that, can you, uh, text me when they finish so I can jump back in?
Yes, I'll do that.
So do you want me to step out now?
No, not yet.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, when we get to the consent agenda, uh, it would be appropriate, uh, for you to say that you're not voting on the, uh, map for number four A because it does an improvement to the street in front of your house.
That's Agenda Item Number Nine, yes.
So when it comes time for the, as long as it's on the consent agenda, if you just announce it, then you're, you're fine.
Okay. And, um, yeah, we won't, we won't pull it from the consent calendar, um, you'll just.
I understand, I just won't vote on that.
And, and then I also understand that we have another Councilmember that has a conflict on four B, map four B.
She's not, she's not here.
Not in attendance.
Right, the, we still have to announce the conflict even if she's not in attendance under the rules.
So on, on item four B, um, one of the streets being, uh,
Four B.
Approved for construction according to the, the plan that was approved, what is Desna, the counselor Campbell lives on Desna Street, so she would.
On four, on four?
Nine.
Nine, yeah.
Number nine.
Agenda Item Number Nine.
No, no.
Okay, I thought it said four.
It's page.
It's just the map.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, when you get to item number nine, there's a map leaving four B.
I didn't hear paid, my fault.
I'm sorry.
All right. Does anyone else have conflict?
Um, uh-uh. City Attorney Pinkney, due to the fact that Councilmember Longacre has a conflict on public hearing one and two, I don't believe we have a quorum to move forward on either of those items.
One, two, three. Okay, so we've got, we've got two other people that are absent, three, two other people, right? So we would only have, uh, yeah, we would not have a quorum on one and two. That is correct.
Okay. They'll be removed.
So I, so I guess I'm not leaving.
So, um.
Can we continue them to the November eighth council meeting?
The Mayor can do that, the Vice Mayor can do that.
Vice Mayor Pageant, would you like to continue public hearing item number one and two to the November eighth council meeting?
Yes.
Does that require a vote?
Uh, I think the Mayor can do it.
Thank you.
All right. Correspondents, do we have any correspondents?
None, Your Honor.
Introductions, I see former City Councilmember Tim Terrell and Sean Goodmanson, anyone else? Is there any other former? Okay, thank you for your previous service. We were going to, item number three, the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The Mayor or any member of the City Council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the City Council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended actions, approval of items three through nine on the consent counter by affirmative roll call vote, and I will not be voting on four A. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, would you like to?
I'll make a motion. Go, go ahead, Dale, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. Um, public appearance, is there anyone here wishing to make a public appearance?
Okay. Since wherever you have this going, we'll do that, and then I'll go back to public appearance.
Okay.
I see you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Longacre, or is that second by Councilmember Merritt, call for the vote.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Public appearances. Persons wishing to address the MPUA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the Vice Mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely minute, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by Municipal Code Section 2-18. Amendments to California Government Code Section 54950 prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda.
My name is Mary Ann Jones, I live at 837 Beach Drive, Needles, California. And I brought the, the, um, historical calendar from the museum for next year, and I wanted to bring it to your attention that in January, we have, we're advertising the, um, fire truck. So it turned out really nice, and so I have, um, a calendar to give each of you, and, um, Zach, if you can hear me, you can come down to the museum, I guess, and pick yours up. And, um.
I, I will do that, thank you.
Yeah, when, so what we try to do is we try to have each month, we have a picture, a historical picture, and then under the picture, there's a, um, a little explanation of what the picture is. So you get a little history lesson on each month. So there, um, I have one for each of you, so I'll. And if any, if you know anyone that wants to buy them, we sell them for $10, it's our moneymaker for the year.
Mary Ann, thank you very much, I've had, received my calendar already, and, uh, I've had a chance to go through it, and it's, it's a great, uh, wonderful tradition that we have in Needles to get this calendar, and we've got one back from 1984 hanging in the greenhouse.
Oh, really? Have fun.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Great.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I am Jaclyn Randall, the Dean of the Paleriti College Needles Center here in, um, Needles, address 725 West Broadway, Needles. And, uh, just wanted to here and say hello, welcome, introduce myself, and also let you know of a couple of events that we have going on that are not on your agenda. Um, we have Pirates of the Penzance Performance, that's going to be free to the public, Wednesday, December 14th, at our center, our choir will be coming from the main campus and performing. And then we also have the Festival of Lights event, that we're inviting all businesses, city-included and different departments if they wish, to decorate a tree, bring it to the center, decorate it there, we're gonna turn it into like a Paleriti College forest, um, on December 3rd, as part of the parade, and then, uh, we're gonna silent auction off the, the trees, and then those, that money will go to our students for Needles at Paleriti College, and then also the Interact students at the high school, since they're gonna be helping out at the event, so. And then also, we have what's called Main Campus on Broadway, um, every fourth Monday, or Wednesday, excuse me, cause tomorrow of the month, and it's from 10 to 2, where our main campus comes down with, uh, our financial aid, our, um, counselors and everyone else. And then, so we just invite people to come out, check out what we have coming, and, uh, trying to see what programs we have and other classes, and just to remind everyone, we do start classes again on January 17th. So, thank you very much, I will leave them in the back for everyone and hope to see you at 725 West Broadway, thank you.
Jackie, thank you and welcome, we're happy to see you here and we hope we will see you again soon, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm representing the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department here in Needles. I'm here tonight to, um, my name is Misty Hunt, by the way, we're at 1111 Bailey Avenue. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know we're having a few events coming up. Uh, tomorrow night, Wednesday, we're having our annual trunk or treat. We have flyers in the back available, if anyone wants to pick a flyer up, uh, it's out on social media, we've posted around, so you should see it floating around here, but we do it out in the rec yard. Uh, it turned out really well last year, and we have a lot more participants this year, so it should be even bigger this year, we're looking forward to that. Um, this week is also Red Ribbon Week, if you have any kids in school, you probably know that, they're doing a bunch of activities this week, uh, celebrating being drug-free. Uh, we were over there Monday with our dog, our canine, we had a deputy out there talking about being drug-free and bully-free. So we gave out a bunch of bookmarksers and had some fun with the kids and the, the dogs out in the yard today, or yesterday we did that. Um, we have the prescription drug take-back, that's coming up Friday, uh, that's also out on social media, if anyone's interested in bringing an old, uh, prescription drugs they wanna get rid of, uh, that's gonna be on Friday from 6 to 10. A lot of people on other agencies are doing it on Saturday, the reason we do it on Fridays is because we take all the drugs down to our facility on Saturday, so we collect it here in Needles and we take it down on Saturday. Um, Saturday, we're having the Hometown, uh, Fall Family Festival, it's a little parade gonna be up by the school, I don't know if you've heard of that, that's going on the Saturday from 9:30 to 11:00, we'll be up there doing that. Um, a few more things coming up in November, we have Hawaiian Shaved Ice with the Cop, that's gonna be Monday, November 7th, out here at the station. We're also gonna have Storytime with the Cop at the library coming up in November, and also Coffee with the Cop, but that's gonna be in Big River. So I just wanted to share those events coming up with you. And then, of course, December, we'll have a lot more stuff going on, again, we're doing our Angel Tree and the Shop with the Cop, and I'll give you some more information on that as the dates come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go on to end of the consent calendar, City Attorney's Report.
Yes, so, a couple things that I wanted to mention this evening, because we have the election coming up, um, as I mentioned at the last meeting, uh, we'll have some newly-elected Councilmembers, and as soon as they are elected, they are subject to the Brown Act, so I just wanted to remind everybody that might be running for office, that once you're elected, even though you haven't been sworn into office, that you are subject to the Brown Act. In addition to that, I wanted to mention SB 1439, which is an amendment to California's Levine Act, and that is a fairly significant change in the law that affects both appointed and elected officials, uh, but in particular, it's a change in how the law works with respect to campaign contributions and elected officials. Uh, so SB 1439 amends California's Levine Act to extend its prohibitions to local elected officials and bodies which had previously been exempt. Under the new prohibitions, a local elected official, such as a City Councilmember, will be required to recuse themselves from voting on a matter involving a license, a contract, a permit, or other entitlement, if a party or participant has made a campaign contribution of $250 or more within the preceding 12 months to that official, and the official knows or has reason to know that the participant has a financial interest in the matter before the council. Additionally, SB 1439 extends the timeframe after an approval during which an official, whether elected or appointed, is prohibited from receiving a campaign contribution from a party from three months to 12 months. So, uh, under this new law, which begins, takes effect on January 1st of 2023, if you were to receive a campaign contribution now, uh, and you're running for office, after January 1st, you would be prohibited from voting on an item that that contributor had a financial interest in, where the contributor made a contribution of $250 or more. So, it, the rule used to only apply to appointed officials, um, which didn't make a lot of sense, uh, now it applies to elected officials as well. And I, if any of the Councilmembers or anyone affected by this has questions, you know, they should just, uh, uh, maybe, uh, let the City Manager know, and we'll try to get information to him to distribute. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, John. City Attorney, the City Manager's Report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I provided a written version of my, uh, quick report. Um, we have been contacted by, uh, San Bernardino County Court System, that beginning in January, they're gonna phase in re-establishment of the local court here in Needles. Um, and it's all contingent upon being able to hire staff, um, but I understand that's not really a problem, uh, that there are, uh, dozens of people who've applied, uh, for, uh, some, uh, very solid-paying jobs. Uh, they are, they will handle, to start with, as part of the phase-in, handle small claims, landlord-tenant disputes, name change petitions, uh, civil types of restraining orders, and, uh, items involving elder abuse, infractions, I, I believe that means like traffic infractions, but the criminal court, uh, the more serious items will continue to be held in Victorville, um, it will be administered, the court here, uh, there'll be a commissioner who will act as judge until a superior court judge is funded by the state of California. So, that's all good news, uh, there's a phase-in, uh, we've missed the court, it takes too much time away, uh, for code enforcement, for, uh, small claims, for our police officers. Uh, the second thing is that, uh, we have ground down the streets that are gonna be repaved, uh, we have finished the waterline replacements in those streets, we are doing cracks, crack sealing, and filling in the, uh, the imperfections, and paving will begin in two weeks. So I will, uh, send you a notice a day or two in advance, or as soon as I know, and then we can have a ribbon cutting. Uh, it's important to celebrate, uh, the success and progress. Uh, during the, uh, establishment of two new batting cages at softball fields, uh, there were two trees cut down along J Street, um, that, uh, were, they, for the two that were cut down, four new trees will be added, so we will do a two-to-one, uh, mitigation. And then that's also, uh, there will be a shade structure added to that, uh, softball field, uh, over the existing grandstands, and that's, uh, paid for by the school. Uh, we've had graffiti, um, comparatively very little, but enough to be a nuisance, um, the vandal was arrested and sentenced to one year and four months for felony vandalism. Um, we met with Bureau of Reclamation yesterday, uh, to submit our water order for our allocation of the Colorado River, uh, we are underutilizing, uh, our allocation, which means that our underutilized stays in the lake. Um, but they also identified, uh, funding mechanisms where we can cut 350,000 gallons a day of wastewater that percolates into the ground, we can pipe that to the golf course or the parks and use it for irrigation.
Are they gonna pay for the funding?
What's that?
And they'll pay for the funding?
Yeah, there's, uh, there is something like $8 billion, uh, to address the drought in the Southwest, and this would be considered part of the resilience, uh, program. The second one they identified is, uh, we can save probably about two-thirds of the water that's used at the golf course by going to an automatic watering system, as opposed to the manual watering system now, where we go out, set 50 sprinklers, go back, turn the pump on, and then go set 50 more sprinklers, shut it off, pull the old ones out, turn on for the new, and then do that over and over again. It, it's, uh, terribly inefficient, and so they've identified a funding source for how we might get the rest of that paid for. Our estimate is it's about two and a half million dollars, uh, we received a grant for 880,000 last year, we'll apply for the balance of that, uh, actually, we need to submit something by November 21st. So, uh, we're gonna go ahead, um, but our water order is secure, um, Misty mentioned the, uh, uh, prescription take-back, uh, it's important that those prescriptions not be thrown in the garbage, cause they contaminate groundwater, and it's also, uh, it's important to have old, especially paint prescriptions, uh, in a controlled environment. Uh, we also received notice and we will be filing a, a grant for, that's only available to communities that allow cannabis. Uh, we've worked with the school district, the, uh, the sheriff's office, and Center for Change, and what we're proposing is a $1.3 million grant over three years, that would include a school resources officer with a canine unit. Part of our cannabis enforcement cost, and additional, or maybe the only, uh, counseling that'll be available up at the school, aimed at drug and alcohol, uh, education and counseling. So, uh, we're gonna, uh, prepare that and get it ready to go in. Um, I'm meeting with Councilor Longacre tomorrow, uh, to finish off, uh, a project we started to improve, the skate park environment. We wanna add more seating, uh, we've already added the cameras and the additional lighting, but we wanna look at how to, uh, get rid of the graffiti that's there, and make sure that we protect the smooth nature of that concrete for the skate park. Nine years ago, uh, the city had a business directional sign program, uh, the city made about seven, eight thousand dollars a year from that, and those are the, those boards that then, like Dairy Queen, when we're not, uh, a, a business, excuse me, can buy a, their name and an arrow on how to get there. We looked at contracting that out, the people we contracted it out to no longer wanna do that, so I'll write an RFP and see if we have any interest in another nonprofit taking that over. We continue to work on the meter misreads, uh, we have a much, uh, greater, uh, understanding, we believe that there are, were 355, um, electric accounts that were affected, and we've already begun implementing the policy direction you gave us at the last meeting, and that is for that, where it was under red and then over red, that we're making sure that it's being billed at the right rate, and that they can pay that out over up to a year. So, that's underway. Uh, I'm having a, a meeting with the Budget Committee on Wednesday, uh, I want to be able to present to you in May, a two-year budget. I think it's important to look at the next year to make sure that we're, we have sustainability, that we don't overcommit now for things that we're gonna be paying for a year, two years out, uh, so we wanna begin to have that discussion. Uh, Misty mentioned the trunk retreat, uh, but also, there's three other events that are going on, on the 29th, the Kitty Parade, uh, up on Washington Street at the elementary school, uh, is happening at, I s, I didn't say at 10:00 AM. Uh, between 1:00 and 4:00 in Duke Watkins, there's going to be a kitty carnival, and what's explained to us is candy in gates. And then, that evening, at 6 o'clock, is the trunk or treat down at Santa Fe Park. And then that evening at six o'clock is the trunk or treat down at Santa Fe Park. So it's going to be sugar aplenty. I'd also like to report that the field lights for Duke Watkins have arrived. I've been working with Sandy Chandler about getting those constructed so we can use that for soccer and bike football and for middle school softball season. So, plus, it will have some casual light that gets over and helps light up the, the skate park. So essentially, the Duke Watkins project will be under construction. And before I'm asked, the signs will be up before we do anything. So we are also expecting any day the LED lights for the softball fields here at Nikki Bunch. So we're, we're starting all that work. I, I want to point out that I received a report this early this evening that the state auditor does an annual ranking of the financial stability and sustainability of every city in the state. Life has been rated at high risk. We're rated at very good because of controlled spending, having an emergency reserve, and not overextending. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, or you could contact me at the office.
The chair recognizes council member Campbell. If you join the meeting.
So, Vice Mayor, you now have a quorum if, if the public's still in attendance.
Mr. Mayor, one of the applicants left already. Two of them left.
Yeah, we moved it to the eighth.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Merritt?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Pardon me. I'm blowing someone your name again. What?
Tana.
Tana Belt.
Um, I just want to thank everybody for coming out on our golf tournament. We were able to raise some money for a scholarship for a senior for the next year, again, for an IEP or a 504 plan, and/or trade school, because we're looking at options to make sure we can get as many kids that apply for it as possible. And I want to thank everybody. It was, it was a good learning curve, definitely. Those are a lot of work, and I'm excited to do it again next year. And I thank everybody again. Have a good night.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Councilmember Longacre?
Yes, your honor, I have a couple of things real quick. The sundial for the cemetery. I, I know I pointed out a few places that had birdbaths. Were we on that subject? And then our train park, the, the train cars itself has received some vandalism a few months ago. The windows were smashed out, plexiglass was broken. I, I guess we should replace the plexiglass from the inside so folks can still see in it. I, I, I believe that's kind of a, a take to being able to climb up on that caboose and actually see inside. Also, the paint has been graffitied for a couple of years now, so maybe we should think about giving it a fresh coat. And last but not least, with that train park, the palm trees that are down there are actually on Santa Fe property, but half of them are hanging over the fence and almost touching the ground in the park. So how about we cut up, cut those leaves off that are on our side of that fence? Because I'm pretty sure the law states we can do that. Because otherwise, they're never going to trim them. And like I said, they're just hanging over the fence like crazy in that park. But the train cars really need some love. Prior council and, and some of the nonprofit groups here worked really hard to make that park happen. So I would really like to see that taken care of quickly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Nothing, your honor.
All right. And I have two things. One, thank you very much, Tana, for the golf tournament that you put on for the dyslexia program. I did notice when playing in a tournament that there were a lot of mosquitoes around the golf course along. And I think there's been quite a few mosquitoes in town. So I think we're going to have some look at having vector control from the county, looking to getting sprayed out here. And then the other thing is that the greenhouse is going to be open again this Friday and Saturday from six o'clock to nine o'clock. If you want to see the greenhouse, now's a chance to go through the house. And there was a pretty good turnout last weekend. With that, I'm going to close. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.